Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, December 3rd, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to a quarter and request roll call, please.
Carpenter, here. Jacobson, here. Boudreau, Staten.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Bollig.
Here.
Thank you. Item 3, the Board may meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, Section 19.851E, to consider new post office lease terms and to discuss the selling of tax increment district Tid 4, village-owned property. Do you have that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Glish.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Bollig.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Staten.
Yes.
So we'll go next door, right? So for those in the audience, we're going to go next door, so we'll be back at some point in the future.
Talk amongst yourselves.
So we are back in action here at the Oregon Village Board. We're on to item 5, Public Appearances. Item A, Discuss with self-meaning street businesses and possible action regarding downtown dumpster agreement. There's some background information from the village administrator. The downtown dumpster agreement for the Jefferson Street parking lot dumpster area has not been signed for 2017 and 2018. At this point, he's recommending not collecting payment for 2017, but attempt to receive payments for 2018 and 19. The recommended motion is if the following conditions are not met by January 31, 2019, the village administrator will have the dumpsters removed from the Jefferson, village's Jefferson Street parking lot property. The users of the dumpster area must designate a coordinator who will be responsible for overseeing the use of the dumpster area, and the name of coordinator must be emailed to the village administrator. The coordinator must provide the names of 2019 users of the dumpster area to the village administrator, and the coordinator must provide the village administrator the signed 2019 dumpster use agreement. And the coordinator must collect fees from the 2018 users and fees from 2019 users, and forward the payments to the village administrator. The village needs to collect $520 for both years.
That's where I can motion. And I did that because the village staff has spent so much time in the past, you know, chasing people down to sign the agreement and collect money, and I just think it's, I think it should be on them. I know Dan's been trying to coordinate it, but he's been busy with other things going on, and I just think at this point, basically giving a two-month warning that this needs to get done.
Why did you recommend having them not pay for 2017?
Because it's getting old, you know? And I'll tell you truthfully, why we didn't do that is because when the one restaurant moved out, the board at that time said, I know, and I actually did something you told me not to do, never put this back on the agenda, but I couldn't, I did it as much as I could. As much as I could, I could not handle administratively, because I made a decision that I would spend more money or as much money to have Matt redraft the agreement twice that year, then I thought, well, I'll just not charge.
Yeah.
And I was hoping I gets, and then I thought, well, they'd be signed and paid in 18, but so that's why I decided not to charge him for 17.
Yeah. Yeah, it is disappointing to have this back in front of us again, especially when they're not paying.
Yeah.
Mike, when did we start this whole dumpster?
Well, Mark Beal was still here, so it had to be like 14, 2015, somewhere in there.
So this has been going on for?
About five years.
Five years, okay. I see Dan's out there. Dan, do you mind answering a couple of questions, or?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Do you want to?
You can say no, if you don't want to answer.
No, I might be able to provide some information, at least on where people are right now.
Yeah, I guess what looms large in my mind right now is, are you going to coordinate this going forward?
Most likely not.
No, okay.
We're probably going to withdraw from using the dumpsters altogether.
Okay.
One of the issues I know that a lot of people have with signing for 2018 and potentially 2019 is the state, is the fact that there is no dumpster corral right now, and the leases for leasing of the dumpster corral and the land it's on. And we're having massive problems with people from Jefferson Crossing dumping, people from coming in and dumping, and we have no ability to control it because the corral's not there, which is just the way it is. That's part of the development, and we can't get to the parking lot until next year. I completely understand that. I just know that's the, one of the things that irks some of the primary users of it.
Have any of the former users inquired about re-establishing that space, or is that not a big deal for them, or?
I don't know if anybody's talked to the village specifically. I do get the idea that there's the general perception that right now, that nothing been known with the parking lot and just the state of the parking lot as it has to be, just the way things worked out, that there's not a lot to do, and that, I don't know how people feel if a fence shouldn't be put up now or not. And that seems, to me, I'm kind of, it seems kind of silly to put up a fence for three months, four months, until you rebid out of the parking lot.
So if I understood you, you're going to take care of your own?
Yeah, we produce very little.
Okay.
We, I mean, we only pay a small portion of what they pay.
And I believe?
Use everything, and honestly, the hassle around it, on every side, not just with leasing it, but with payment for the dumpster services.
Okay.
Keep getting, making sure people are breaking down boxes and putting the garbage in, keeping the area clean, and dumpsters aren't blocked, and blah, blah, blah.
In other words, you've got enough on your plate.
But, yeah, I'm fine with having two garbage cans and two recycling bins.
Okay.
So.
So if I looked on this list of former users, I would think that Scott McWilliams would be doing the same, right?
That is, that will be my, that is my assumption.
So we're?
I tried to catch him today, and I wasn't able to, but if I had to put money on it, I guess, I mean, he produces virtually nothing.
Right.
The, I mean, Sonny's, Ace's main tabs, Ziggy's, and Charlie's are the?
Just so be three users.
Four.
Sonny's?
Sonny's, the main tab, or Sonny's, the main tab, Charlie's, and Ziggy's.
I thought Ziggy's would handle his own.
I think, I thought they were using it, at least still right now, because I talked to Mike about it yesterday.
But he would have room to have dumpsters on his property, wouldn't he?
Yeah, I think there, I think there, it's a, in theory, it's a cost-sharing, they don't need the full-size dumpster that we get, but it's cheaper for them to join everyone to.
I guess?
Mike's one of the people who, we have no problems, you know, Mike always pays, and there's no issues with that.
Right. So I guess what I'm leading to, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all, Dan. Matter of fact, I want to thank you for your former work in coordinating all this, because I knew when you volunteered that it was going to be a thankless job, let's put it that way. I don't know if it was thankless, but I mean, it would be a lot of work.
Yes.
And it'd be frustrating at times, but thank you for doing that. If, after tonight, the board decides not to be doing that anymore, we're just really going to be affecting probably three people, is the way I see it.
Um.
Three businesses.
Yeah, three to four, depending on, yeah, I don't know.
Depending on what Ziggy's is going to do.
Um.
Yeah, Ziggy's could.
I think those would be the main people affected.
It'd be the main.
I'm trying to think of.
It'd be the main tab, Charlie's, and Sonny's.
Yeah. Well, my point is that we've probably, there's probably been hundreds of hours of staff There's been taxpayer expense has gone into building the corral, moving the corral, and gosh knows how much board time we've spent on this, a lot. So when it comes down to it, personally, I think it's time for the businesses to be responsible for their own garbage. But if, you know, as Mike said, they can work it out and get things in order, if they can coordinate it and get it in order, and I assume that the board will talk about putting the corral back up again. But my point again is, I would have no problem just saying, we're out of the garbage business. You know, most people in the village take care and pay for their own garbage, and I think at some point, if it can't be coordinated by the business owners, you know, I think we've, we've played, we've been as generous as we can be. And don't get me wrong, I appreciate having a full business downtown. I can't say how important that is, but at some point, you just start feeling so unappreciated that you don't want to do it anymore. So those are my thoughts. And again, thank you, Dan, for your past efforts.
Yeah, I'll tell you from what feels like it's become an outside perspective really quickly. I think, you know, from the business side, it's a decision about, we want this service, or we want to be able to do this or not, and we're willing to put the work in to do it or not. And on the village's side, I think, you know, it's what is the aesthetic value, you know, garbage cans versus dumpster space worth, and where's the middle ground between those two things? I have no idea. But that's, I mean, that's where I put the sort of question for each side.
I agree, yeah.
Other questions, comments, or motions, anyone?
I would just say that they're, I mean, they're going to have to have dumpsters, because our restaurant can't operate with cans, so it's just a matter of whether or not we provide a corral. So they're going to have to have room for dumpsters. If those three businesses each need a dumpster and a recyclable, then how many do you have now? Do you have, like, how many containers total, four?
There's just one eight-yard dumpster and one eight-yard recycling.
For three businesses?
Yeah, it's tight.
Wow, okay.
With the dumping, we've had a lot of problems. It's tight normally. There was talk, someone wanted to move up to two times a week, and then get rid of this
It's just, it's not, that shouldn't be our job to do.
So I think Part of this, in my mind, if they don't pay, we drop it.
Yep.
Steve, I'm gonna move that we approved the mo, the motion.
Mike's motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so that motion is, if the following condition are not met by January 31, 2019, uh, the village administrator will have the dumpsters removed from the Jefferson Street parking lot, and then the conditions that I read earlier, so. Okay, spread that motion a second. Do you have any reaction to that, Dan? Seems like it's consistent with what you said.
Yeah, I
Either they get their act together, or they don't have it.
I have ne, I I'm happy to contribute, I can't
Yeah, well, you don't, you don't, you don't represent them, and they're not here, so.
Right, yeah, and I, and I don't, I don't want to speak for them, yeah.
Yeah, there's no burden on you, so. Further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carries, okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan, for all you've done, again.
Okay, they'll go to item B, discussion Dean Proctor from Vandewall, regarding downtown parking wayfinding plan and map and possible board direction. Welcome, Dean.
Where would you like me?
Right there at a microphone, and TV will be right on you.
You shouldn't have said that.
I know, it's fun to say it, though.
Thanks. I do have a presentation, uh, too, if you'd like me to
It's, it's up on the TV screen.
Shall I turn it for?
Well, actually, they can, they can see
Yeah, there's one here, too.
You can sit right at the table there and speak in the mic.
Yep.
That's perfect.
Is this mic on?
Yeah, it is, yep.
No, you're fine. Well, as in a lot of towns, there's always interest in parking. So we were asked to improve what is already a pretty good situation, where you have a number of parking lots and a lot of on-street parking, but we were asked if we could improve the identification of, and the wayfinding to your, your downtown parking opportunities. Again, you had, nope, yeah, one more up, there we go. So again, you have a wonder, a beautiful streetscape, and you already have some signage in that. There's a lot going on, a lot of roads coming together, a lot of signage. But we identified parking lots such as the Hitching Park Lot and number of areas of on-street parking that are identifiable as clusters of on-street parking. Okay, next. You have this signage and streetscape, attractive light poles with banners, parking signs, and smaller signs that are kind of at a pedestrian scale that direct people to destinations, and somewhere in there, there are little signs that say parking. Next. So we've delivered two different products. One is a plan, which is for you, the village, to use to kind of get a, your head around the parking lots that you have that are public, one parking lot that is private, but that allows public parking at times, areas of on-street parking, and then, and then other on-street parking. And then this plan, the square, uh, the squares on the map show locations of directional signage that would help direct people to these parking areas. And then the circular symbols at the parking lots are indications of identification signs that identify the parking areas. There's also the orange route, which kind of identified as kind of a figure-eight route that you can use as a framework, and people looking for parking spaces can use as kind of a figure-eight to find their way around downtown and to find parking. This plan was for you to, I guess, to move forward and to get a, a feeling for what signage might be possible to help people get to these places and identify the, the parking areas. These are some quick sketches of some ideas that, for the directional signage on the left and then the identification sign on the right, these signs would be the, the standard graphic for parking. Uh, they would be larger than the small Ps that you have now, so that people could see them from an automobile and be directed to the parking lot and then see the name of the, the major parking area on the right. And finally, the final product, we felt like it would be helpful if there was a parking map where it was simplified. A lot of the signage symbols and everything are not on this plan, but it does show the four major public parking areas. The one parking lot at the bottom at the church, which is a private lot, but can hold public parking at times. And then four public parking areas, the Brook Park Main and Spring Street parking areas. That this could be handed out to businesses and to the public, if they're trying to find parking, or they would like to have these at their businesses to hand out to customers to show the next time they're downtown where all the parking is and how they can find it. So this could be an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece that could be tri-folded, like, it could be handed out as an eight-and-a-half by 11 like this, or it could be tri-folded like this with the title on the right here and hand it out like this. So that's basically the product.
And one of the things that we really wanted to do was, when Jeff and I, Jeff and I met with Dean, was to really try to get people to start using the, the lot on Washington Street, the church lot, and hopefully these signs will help, the wayfinding signs will help. And the board may recall that we have money budgeted in the 19 budget to put up these, the signs that, and poles that Dean was talking about, so.
The, with the big P on it?
Those.
Those, yeah, okay, those are nice. So, the question I have is, Jefferson, Jefferson Street on that one side is all on street, which I don't see it listed in Elm, Elm on both sides? Is there a reason why?
I, I think, we, we debated whether or not to show every street with on-street parking, we thought that the map would be somewhat
Okay, so you did that purposely, okay.
We, we just thought it'd be pretty easy doing it.
All right.
And certainly we can add other areas if there are streets that have significant parking on them and you feel like they're missing from this.
So a few years ago, Dean, we did the map of downtown parking for businesses, and Vandewell prepared that, right?
And the same.
Okay, so maybe like four or five years ago, and nobody used it. So how do you get them to use it? And I'll be perfectly blunt, uh, not to you, but just in general, is, uh, it felt like they came here and whined about parking, but took no ownership to do anything about it. So do you have any, any experience how you get people to use it, or?
Well, the idea of having it in place with all the businesses downtown, I guess, is an idea on the checkout counter or that sort of thing.
Yeah.
If this was there, that seems like a handy place where people might pick that up. I don't know if people would use the website, um, if this might be up on the website. That might be another source if they're heading that way.
Yeah. It seems to me like when people are in a restaurant, it's easy for a waitstaff or at the, the bar, whatever, to say, we know parking can get tight, it's a busy downtown, lots of restaurants, here's a map for future parking. We hope you come back again. And, and they don't do that, so I don't know why, but I'm fine with trying it again. It's just disappointing, we tried it once, and nothing happened except ongoing complaints about parking.
So this is a product that's ready to print, it wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be a lot of additional outlay to print some of these and maybe see how that
Yeah.
How that goes. And maybe in the racks out in the lobby here
Yeah.
Would be another, another idea.
Chamber of Commerce, I see Judy back there, could, uh, put it on a website, or?
It, I think it's a, I think that's, the map may grab people's attention more than the one, the one we did was pretty basic. I think this, I think this is a nicer-looking map, so. I'm not saying that's gonna work, Steve, but it, it may.
Yeah, I hope so.
I think the street signage, too, could, could work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that was, that was a good recommendation. It came from the downtown meetings we had, that, um, we needed to have better signage downtown, so, yeah.
Yeah, if people from downtown, or out of town come in, and they drive by, like, the hitching post, and they miss it, and they don't find a place nearby, and it's hard on a busy night, because there's a lot of restaurants in close proximity, and they don't know about this, they don't do it, but so that would help, help them find it, as what big signs as they come in and drive by it, so.
We were hoping by adding a few things like this figure-eight route,
Yeah.
People kind of get that in their minds, if this lot's full, that they, they know there's another one on that route.
Yeah.
Also, we named, um, these lots, and I don't know if that would help or not, but, oh, if that one's full, go to the Jefferson lot.
Yeah.
Maybe if people get to learn, you know, the names of four or five lots downtown, that might help, giving directions.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That was one thought.
Yeah.
We also, there's a line between the hitching post and the Triangle Park parking, where we thought that people could be directed, if one of those two lots is full, that there would be a sign that might direct people to the other lot, because that's a mid-block connection that people may not know of, so. We tried to add a little, little things to, to help.
Yeah, that's good. Questions or comments, anybody?
I like it. I'm thinking of all kinds of things.
A good product.
Yeah. Yeah.
Visitor Center, libraries, on the back of the doors in the bathrooms.
Well
Give people something to read.
That's what I was gonna say.
I've heard lots of suggestions.
If you go to Gates and Brovi, Imano Street, which is, if you, if you go to the men's room above the urinal, you can study the map.
There you go.
And I, and, and you're a captive audience. And I, I've seen that map a few times. So business owners can, could choose to do that or not. And, and of course, that map, the difference is, this map is, is kind of a community-wide parking map. That map was designed by that particular business, so it kind of shows their business with parking in relation to their business. But you could easily show, choose to highlight, put a star on your business on this map. Say, here's where we are.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be hard to do.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Put it on the wall.
I also like the, having the, the physical signs, because when I'm driving, I don't want to keep reaching for the map. I want to be able to see the sign and go that way, so. I'm excited to see those come to fruition.
The only suggestion that
Excuse me, Dan, come to the microphone, please. Dan, come to the microphone, please. It doesn't pick up on TV otherwise. Thank you.
Sure, the only suggestion I was gonna throw out was actually putting the visitor center on there, this Mark calling out where the visitor center is. Because if, I'm assuming this is gonna be used by primarily people not familiar with the area, who would have, who would be most likely to use the visitor center. So that's just my only thought.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense. If there are any other important destinations that aren't shown on this, too, we can add that to the memo.
So further comments, suggestions? So what do you want from us?
Just that, just, you know, I think the motion would be to direct us to keep working on this, and then, you know, Jeff, Jeff and I will, will bring back the actual installation of the, the poles and, and signs at some point.
Okay. So we need that as a motion?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Continue working on it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carries, okay, great. Thanks, Dean, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item C is discussion of new post office building lease, the Postmaster Brandy Simmons. Uh, the current lease expires June 30, 2020, and possible board direction. Welcome, Brandy.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I did contact, um, some JLL and headquarters in DC about not renewing the lease or not extending our lease because we have outgrown this post office. I've already added, uh, one route. I'm going to be adding a second route and possibly a third route within this next year. Currently, we don't have enough parking for our employees. I have 26 employees, I'm authorized 30. That's six more than I had at this time last year. And our employees don't have any parking as it stands. I'm, I've already contacted the library, and I'll be going to the pool next to see if we can take some of their parking so that we have a place for the employees. Customers have no parking at all. Because of the vent, mail vehicles, along with the employees, there's no place for customers to park. And with the package volume and Amazon over the last five years, it's, it's really, at this point, it's a safety hazard every morning when you walk into that building, and we have over 2,000 parcels that are being split up between the 11 routes that we have. I'm bringing carriers in at 5 o'clock now to start delivering parcels just because of the holiday season. So it has become, you know, very, uh, very tight in there, and we really don't have the space to stay in that building.
So the, the lease with the post office expires in June of 2020, and in the packet is an email from the post office asking to extend the lease. And Jeff, Jeff and I, Jeff and I have been having some discussions with Brandy. We, we, we feel the pain she's in, in what, what's going on with the building. And I think our recommendation at this point is that, um, is that the, the board have Steve as the village president contact whomever at the post office, get to identify that person, to say that we would encourage the post office to start looking at a new building setup for, for our local post office, either in, in a building or, or have them build a new building. And, and then rather than extending the lease three or five years, you know, we would just take the current lease, which expires in, like I mentioned, in 2020, and just do a one-year extension. At some point, we are gonna need that space, as we explained to Brandy, for the, for the, the building, the senior center and all that, but that probably won't happen until 2022, so. I feel comfortable going out a year, another year after 2020.
So does that work for you?
I think that's workable. Um, like I said, I've, I've been talking to Mike and Jeff both, because of course, me down here at the post office and those people up in corporate, they don't really see what's going on inside that building, and they don't realize how much we have outgrown it. So I'm pushing from my direction, and if I can have a little assistance from the village board to push from your direction also, stating that we need something a little bit larger. And there are some opportunities, and one of the things that I talked about with Mike and Jeff, too, is Jason Tice has contacted me and sent me plans for that building that he's going to be vacating, and that would be a fantastic location for, it has the docks, it has the parking for employees, it has the parking for customers, it could be converted to a retail lobby fairly easily. So I kind of feel like that would be a, a great opportunity for us to move to that building if we were able to, so.
So what you need from us is a letter that I would sign that would go to whomever you would give us a name and address for, is that right?
Correct. Right now, it's Casey Hughes with JLL Contracting, because they subcontract all the leases.
Okay.
So I will be, I've already contacted him, spoke with him today. Um, and then I have some people in my chain of command at district and area that I'm gonna be contacting and sending, um, a plea, basically, that we need a larger building. So, uh, what Casey and I decided was if we kind of attack it from both sides, that it would probably be beneficial.
Yeah.
You know, between the village board and me, both going from both sides to say, hey, we need something a little bit bigger, then that would probably speed up the process a little bit.
If our letter needs to go in more than one place, that's fine, too.
It, it may have to do that, yeah.
So they're aware of what our concerns are. It's not just you, we're supporting what you're saying, that
Right.
That it's too small, and we've all agreed on that.
I have a lot of customers that are contacting me on a regular basis complaining because they have nowhere to park.
Yeah.
And I understand that. My employees are complaining because they have nowhere to park also.
Yeah.
We've just, you know, there's just not enough parking spaces for that building.
Yeah. Okay. So do you need a motion on that, Mike?
It'd probably be good for the record, you know, so that would, actually, we'd probably put that in the letter, to be honest with you.
Okay, yeah.
The board voted to
So we need a, a motion and a second to have that letter prepared.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Brandy, would, um, in the future, I think we're dreaming of building a downtown senior center with a community center and then apartments on top. Would you ever consider bringing back like a retail component of the post office to that building, so we could still have a downtown presence?
I did mention that to Mike. That is a possibility. Um, I managed a unit, uh, and, well, it's Capital, Capital Retail, Capital Station, and University Station. It's three separate buildings. So one building, the Annex, is just carriers. That's it. It has no retail function at all. Um, and that's where a majority of the mail goes. But then there is a separate on the square in Madison. It's Cap Retail. It is there, right there in the square, for customers to go to, and it's fairly busy. And then we have the university branch that's basically for the college. So that is an option. That's not something I would have control over.
Okay.
But that's something that could be presented to the postal service, too, or in the letter.
To have some sort of presence downtown, I'd be really in favor of that. I, I think lots of folks like to have the, the post office.
Right here.
Yeah, at least some sort of presence would be great.
Yeah, the downtown presence is, would nice to be
Could we include that in the letter as a recommendation or a request?
Sure.
Because that's definitely workable, and I would just split my staff. I would have clerks to sort the mail for the carriers, and then I would have clerks just to take care of the customers. And I've managed offices like that before, so it's not unusual. There are a lot of offices that do that specifically for these reasons, you know, smaller areas, or even larger areas.
Okay, thank you, sure.
Any further questions or discussion comments? So we need a motion, please? So we need a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So the motion is to send the letter? Is that what we're voting on?
For the letter, yeah, including.
The downtown presence.
Downtown presence, yeah. Continued. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item D, discussion of possible action regarding emergency post office repairs. Recommended motion is to approve payment $11,400 to Pioneer Roofing for repairs to post office roof, funding from the Capital Equipment Fund, number 414.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So it sounds like that's done, so we need to.
It is done.
Yes. It was needed and got done, so we need to approve it. Are there any questions or comments, anything? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for that. That'll make Jeff happy.
Yeah, but we don't get to give him a bad time.
I know, I know.
You do the time when he's here.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll save it.
I was thinking he purposefully wasn't here, so he didn't get asked about that.
Yeah.
I think he preferred to be here, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Okay, item E, discussion with Ryan Sheehan, program coordinator, Tobacco-Free Columbia-Dane County Coalition on Oregon and vaping and possible board direction. So welcome, Ryan, and your students, and Amy.
Thanks for having me here. My name is Ryan Sheehan with Public Health, Madison Dane County, and I I staff our local Tobacco-Free Coalition for Columbia and Dane County. And so one of my roles in the last few months has been to go around, educate our communities about the trends we are seeing in vaping, and so I'm on here tonight. I just have a hopefully quick slideshow for you. This is, if you could scroll back a little bit. Actually, sorry, you're in the right spot. Yeah, so that's the title slide. Yeah, I think you're in the right spot. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yep. So first, our tobacco trends. Actually, there we go. So, next slide. I'm sorry, you were at the right spot. Thanks, Brian. So, yeah, so over the years, we've had great progress in our cigarette smoking rates. As you can see, most of those trend lines go down for cigarettes, cigars, pipes, smokeless tobacco. And the one that we are seeing on the far right there go directly up is our vaping rates. In 20, next slide. Our data from 2016, our high school use rate of vaping products, it was about 13%. We will have our new data in about January for our new high school use rate of e-cigarettes. I'm fairly certain that will be significantly higher than that in 2016. Next slide, please. And the reason for that are these products here. By any name, you see there, whether it's e-cigarettes, mods, vape pens, iukas, cigalikes, Juul, or the new one, Sorin, these are, it's the same thing, they're all, they're all vape devices. Next slide, please. How's an e-cigarette work? Essentially, it's a battery-operated device. The battery heats up the juice liquid that you see inside there. This is a refillable device. There are some that you can use and throw away, disposables. And the battery heats this liquid up to a really hot degree and out comes aerosol from the liquid. Next slide, please. The liquid is made up of four main ingredients, propylene glycol, glycerol, nicotine, and then water. We know that there are thousands of flavors that are on the market right now, a variety of candy-like flavors that are used to addict youth, and that's been seen in our rates. Next slide, please. From our 2016 survey, we know that nine out of 10 Wisconsin teens would not try e-cigarettes if they did not contain flavors. So a direct correlation to our youth use rates.
Did the FDA just do something with that?
Yes, and I have a slide come up.
I'm sorry. I missed it.
But that's great. One main contributor to our youth use rates is the Juul. That's the slide of it. This is the actual size of it right here, my hand. Hand it around if you want. Very easy to seal. The Juul is a, one single device, and what goes in there is a Juul pod, which I don't have on there because it's actually, when you touch it, nicotine will get in your hands. I'm not gonna hand it out right now because it's been used before. And so you stick a Juul pod in here. Actually, on the next slide, I would help with that. You can see, those are the Juul pods on top there. It comes in four to five main flavors, mango, mint, cymbrel. Juul pod, that small Juul pod that goes on the top of the Juul there is worth one pack of cigarettes worth of nicotine. So it's a very strong nicotine. It's actually manufactured differently. It's a nicotine salt, and so it's meant to hit your system and your brain faster like a cigarette. Juul owns about three-fourths of the of the vape market as well. As you can see, there's a charger. It can charge in a USB laptop. It can charge in one hour. And this is essentially how it works as well. So you stick the Juul pod liquid into the top there and then you charge it and it'll up. One has to do, youth or adult, is you put the Juul pod in the device and then you just inhale on the end of it. The battery automatically activates and the user inhales and then exhales the aerosol. All right, so what are some of the health effects? Next slide, please. So I guess the main thing to note is it's not just water vapor that comes off, as many might say. It's actually an aerosol, which is small water droplets, contained with the nicotine and various other chemicals that come off of it. And so that's what we'll look at here. 2015 study from Harvard showed that diacetyl was one main chemical. Their study showed that nearly three-fourths of the 50 cigarettes, vape products, excuse me, that were tested had diacetyl, which was a chemical that was used in some factories to produce the butter flavoring for movie theater popcorn. And so many of those employees in those factories got popcorn lung, it was called. And so that was a really sort of debilitating lung issue with the lung sort of has issues, respiratory issues, and chronic long-lasting lung disease, lung disease. From a 2018, just this year, in the Journal of Pediatrics, there are six or seven main chemicals that are coming off these vape products. Very long words here, aclyl nitrile, quetonaldehyde, and propylene oxide. Basically, these chemicals are used in adhesives and dyes and polyurethane plastics. So there are cancer-cause causing chemicals that are coming off in this aerosol. Some other chemicals that have been found, some other studies, benzene on the right-hand side was actually found in the last study as well. Obviously, nicotine comes off of it, formaldehyde, propylene glycol. Propylene glycol is found in naturally in some foods and, but it's not meant to be actually aerosolized into the lungs. So there was a case of a young adult who vaped alcohol last month and ended up in the hospital, aerosolized the alcohol and it went straight to the system and was in ICU for a while. So, I mean, he had a, some major issues. Nicotine impact on the brain disrupts brain development, especially young people, so young adolescents and young adults. Brains are still developing and it can change the structure of a brain to make them more dependent on on substances in the future. Obviously, nicotine is highly addictive. Nicotine has impacts on the body itself, from your lungs to muscles, your heart, so those that may have asthma as well in your lungs that can exacerbate asthma. And that's just the nicotine that's coming off in the aerosol. So you can imagine having those other chemicals that we saw that are cancer-causing be inhaled into the other system. Long-term effects. So obviously, we don't know a lot of long-term effects. These vape products haven't been around long enough yet to have those studies. But many of the studies, as I said, the short-term health effects are showing these few cancer-causing chemicals and extremely high amounts of nicotine that are coming off in the aerosol. So really trying to educate local, both communities, schools, elected officials about, you know, sort of what's happening around vape, vaping, and what can be done, both educationally and policy from the best practice lens, sort of a population health systems lens. So the state of Wisconsin Department of Health Services launched a campaign this last year called Tobacco is Changing, tobaccoschanging.com. Here's hoping your kids hate sweets. So it's a sort of a media campaign on social media and really trying to educate parents and adults about what they're might be using. I'm not sure if you know this, but all flavored tobacco products that are non-cigarettes, including vape products that are flavored, do not have to be behind the counter for access. So many of our products, a lot of our communities, are placed next to candy aisles, are on the counters, next to candy. There was a bill in the Wisconsin Legislature last session that would have placed them behind the counter. It actually passed the Senate but did not get a hearing in the Assembly. And as you mentioned, Michael, so the FDA has taken some action in September. They acknowledged that vaping is an epidemic. And they gave leading manufacturers 60 days to come up with a plan to reduce youth rates. In October, they raided Juul Labs offices, so reminiscent of big tobacco back in the day. And just in November, last month, they announced new rules to affect vaping, the major one being that it would prohibit flavored products except tobacco flavor, mint flavor, menthol flavor, from all, from all, all ages retailers. Any convenience stores, gas stations that sell vape products that have flavors would not be allowed to anymore if these rules go through. They would be allowed in vape shops and tobacco shops that are over 18. New age verification, so if you buy these online, which has been an issue, would require someone to sign for these products at the house with a valid ID, which is not currently the case. Bans flavored cigars, prohibits some marketing practices. Some of these companies were trying to manufacture these products to make it look like other food products on the market. And then finally, it actually bans menthol from cigarettes and tobacco products, which is a big win for health equity and those populations that use menthol at a higher rate. So what can communities do, besides at the state and federal level, what can local communities do? And so I have some options here and suggestions. You know, we can train our staff in schools, educate our parents, and just general community education like I'm doing here. Schools can update their tobacco curriculum to include these cigarettes in Juul. Schools can update their school district tobacco policy, and Amy will touch on that just briefly when she speaks. And then finally, you can include vaping devices in local smoke-free laws. And so that's one way that we can keep our social norms of clean and nor air that we have from our smoke-free law. Next slide. Madison did this in 2015. Dane County did it. We're not in corporate areas back in 2015 as well, after Madison. Some sample signage there. It's very easy. It's signage you can find in the Madison's web, our public health website as well. It's a pretty easy change. You define the device itself, not the substance, and then you put it into the definition of smoking. So it's a pretty simple change to make. And really, next slide, if you want. The intent really is to keep our indoor air clean. The standard should be clean air, not less harmful air. So we want to keep our workers, our youth, our parents that use bowling alleys, that work in offices, that frequent restaurants and bars, in our public workplaces, to have that clean air standard. So so I'm gonna hand it off to our two fact youth that are Oregon, Oregon High School, to talk about what they're doing with their youth prevention in their schools. And Amy will follow up what she's seen as far as the youth vape rates here in Oregon. And then, yeah, so I can ask questions after that, I guess.
And welcome to U2. Nice to have you here. Go ahead.
I'm Autumn.
And I'm Catherine.
So obviously, we are fact. It is a very small group right now. We have maybe six, seven people in our group right now. And we all range from
Freshmen to seniors.
Yeah. So, yeah. We do not, it's not an acronym, but if you go to the next slide, it explains it more. So we are a student-led organization, spreading awareness about the consequences of tobacco. And our goal is to educate and advocate for a tobacco-free lifestyle with our peers in the high school and people around the community, and we want to promote more healthy habits. Fact is actually statewide, like, group kind of. We're 30 individual groups with 3,000 members. All right, so why are we joined Fact? I joined Fact because we have keys at our school, which was, it's kind of same thing, but it's more broad, and I wanted to be more involved because my family's been very affected by tobacco and e-cigarettes and all that. So so I wanted to be more involved in the community.
And then for my, the reason I joined was because I have, I have some family that died because of tobacco usage, so because of cancer effects. So our, what we hope to accomplish for this upcoming year is we do these things called factivism, where they're just activities that we do to help spread the awareness of tobacco throughout the school. So last year, we, I remember I presented at RCI and we presented at the middle school, and we're gonna do that this year again, too, to talk about the usage of tobacco because it's really starting to affect RCI and the middle school. And then we're gonna start something called the 12 Days of Factmas. And we have this, like, really cheesy song that we're gonna put on posters and we're gonna hang up around the school. We're hoping to go pick up cigarette butts around the community, so we'll get like a bag and we'll throw them in, so they're no longer in the community. And then there's this thing that you can put a message if you take a fence during like a football or soccer game, and we'll put like the cups and then we'll clean them up afterwards. We're gonna do some activities and presentations, especially in the health class, the sophomore, our 10th grade is required to take a health class, and we go talk to them. We'll make buttons to promote fact. And then also, we're gonna just work on being advocates through social media and so.
Yeah. And then, so now
And this is Amy Miller. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome, Amy.
And I will be quick because I know we're running out of time. So I'm Amy Miller. I play a few different roles in the community. I am a member of Oregon Cares. I am also the community ed director for the Oregon School District, and I work with AODA grants and supports within the school district. So one of the things, when you see the vaping numbers, what we completed the Dane County Youth Survey, 7 through 12, in January of this year. And what we noticed, and as you heard from Ryan, and we appreciate public health and all they're doing to keep us up to speed in this ever-changing world of Juuling and vaping. We heard in the fall, there was a significant increase in Dane County schools of Juuling. So we actually changed the terminology in the survey, so students that took the survey in January had the term Juuling in it because we said kids will say, no, they're not vaping because they're Juuling. Our numbers, if you see the Dane County average, is 19%. So we're one of the districts that took the survey after the verbiage was changed, and ours is almost 31%. So there is a significant issue. Middle school is 7.7%. So we knew, we got behind something. It's like any good marketing. In 2015, 16, and 17, the kids started hearing about it. We didn't know about it until it was big. So this is something that we've been working on. Public health has been a big help. Our curriculum has changed in terms of health classes. The kids are doing an amazing job also working with public health to stay up on current information. And our focus with kids is really about goals and about brain development. It's not a don't do. It's what do you need to know about yourself and how this is gonna affect you? And if you have goals, is this gonna help you to get to the goals or not? The only other thing I was gonna share was we have school district policy on devices. And I like Ryan's wording on that. Define the device. Our policy has changed September 2016, August 2017, February 2018, and again in October this year, to make sure the wording is open enough to incorporate everything that he's talking about as the devices change. So I have, from public health, what Ryan had up here, sample language, which they shared sample language with us as a school district as well. And I hope this is helpful to you as you move forward. Our goal is always healthy community. We had a farm-to-school chili triad today, and we send emails home to our parents. And I think this is the perfect message that we all believe in as part of community. Our wording is, let's work together to help everyone make healthy choices. Our goal is to make the healthy choice the easy choice. We appreciate We appreciate your time. I'll drop these off.
Thank you. So, board, are there questions or comments?
I've got a couple of questions. I don't know who wants to, yeah, Brian, that'd be great. Other than the device, is there a difference between vaping and juuling?
Ah, no.
Okay.
It's just an action term. So, juuling is vaping, but youth will not consider, they call it juuling.
I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't know the difference. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, juuling is an action verb term for the youth that are using it. Yeah.
Okay. So, juuling just refers to vaping with a Juul?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I had, and we've all heard of secondhand smoke, is I assume there's the same danger with secondhand vapor.
Yeah, so as I was saying there, some of the health effects, I mean, those chemicals that I shared with you that are being found in these studies are coming off in the aerosol. So, I guess one of the differences is that the aerosol is not coming off into the device itself, it comes off from the user. So, if someone is using vape products in a restaurant or bar or whatever, and then they exhale that, that's where the chemicals are coming off into.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Yep. Correct.
Well, Jerry took one of mine, but the other one was the, what kind of pushback are companies that produce these products, do we, has there been a lot of it? Does it put municipalities in danger of being sued if we pass this kind of stuff? How does that work?
Yeah. So, Madison, you know, was one of the first ones to go or to add vaping devices into their local smoke free air law. There were a few vape shops that actually supported that measure. They were more concerned about the cessation and having adults be able to sample in a vape shop. So, I help with the enforcement as far as within public health, medicine, Dane County, for our statewide law for smoke free air. And then, as far as Madison's vaping addition, and I've had, there's been no complaints to public health, medicine, Dane County for any vaping violations as well. City Milwaukee just passed theirs. We have it in Dane County, which is not in corporate areas and towns. No issues so far. No, no one's been sued. And so I think the vaping industry as a whole really is not, you know, I can't speak for them, but I mean, they haven't shown up to sort of, you know, really fight this issue, I guess you could say. So, yeah.
Ryan, you have a question?
Well, I think it's been answered, but, I mean, one of the things, someone who's been in tobacco with Ryan, worked with Ryan, is this is, this is the ultimate, what the tobacco industry likes to do is get the kids, when they're young, get them hooked on nicotine, and then they're addicted for life. So this is just another way. And I remember, as the data person, always looking at cigarette smoking, and then all of a sudden, we're seeing e-cigarettes quite everybody by surprise, and it's just gotten worse and worse. So...
I think what we're trying to do is just, you know, create and keep social norms. I mean, we all expect to go on an airplane and not have to resuck and then smoke. And maybe add vape devices to all domestic airlines. You know, we expect to go into a restaurant and bar, bolognese, in a workplace and not resuck and then smoke. And, you know, that should be the same for vaping. I mean, it's a clean indoor air standard, not a less harmful standard or a different standard, you know, for different devices. Yeah. So...
And I would just say nicotine is nicotine.
Correct.
Chief, do you have any comments or suggestions?
I don't. I mean, I can echo the fact that we could probably fill up our evidence room with the number of devices that we get from the school itself. You know, you drive around and you see these teenagers and their vehicles vaping, and it's coming out the, you know, it's just, it's just an extraordinary amount of volume of smoke that comes out of their vehicles and from the person. And I can also tell you that they're doing it right in class. I mean, they're hiding it from the teachers and doing it right in class. So, you know, I would recommend anything that we can do to help prevent that is something that the board should probably take a strong look at.
So you're supportive of an ordinance?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, what is our current smoking in public places ordinance say, and how difficult will it be to update that?
So if I remember correctly, and this is, I was going to ask the question here or make the comment, I think, Steve, I think you talked about doing the smoking ban, but then we decided not to do a local ordinance because it was eventually passed by the state.
Yeah, statewide, though.
Right. But the fact that it didn't get a hearing, just moving it behind the counter, the likelihood that that's going to be done statewide is probably unlikely. Do you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
Okay. So we're probably going to have to do something locally if we want to do something. So I would probably ask Matt to, looking at the email from Ryan, you know, probably just get ahold of Madison's ordinance, take a look at it.
Do we need a motion to ask him to look into that?
Oh, please.
Can we require businesses to put it behind the counter without state backing?
I can answer that.
I don't know. I know that there was an issue that was litigated about local authority to do just that in the context of, I think, cigarettes. And I, as I recall this a while ago, the court decided that municipalities didn't have that authority because the state had kind of occupied the field of regulation in that area. But I have no idea where the, what the state of law is with respect to these kinds of devices.
Okay.
I can answer that, yeah. So we are preempted locally from any kind of point-of-sale ordinances, and that includes behind-the-counter, Tobacco 21 ordinance prohibiting flavors, vaping licenses. So I know vape shops have to have a license to sell. So, so, yeah, locals are preempted on a lot of things. Smoke free air law was not one of them, so...
But if citizens wanted to do something, letter writing campaign to businesses, that would be, that might be another way to encourage local businesses to keep it behind the counter.
Absolutely.
And I can tell you from a citizen lens, it is behind the counter, because that's something I watch. And there was a situation in one business where it was just the Juul advertising was on a door. And I actually asked the manager to come out with me, and we talked about the fact, the height of the advertising, who was it really targeting? It was way down low. So, the person agreed with me and moved it. It was something that a vendor came in and did, so they weren't even aware it happened. But in conversations I've had when I've seen anything which is small in Oregon, they've been very friendly conversations. They understand.
Good, good.
So we're looking for a motion to prohibit use of electronic cigarettes where smoking is prohibited. Is that what you want right tonight, right?
Director of Village Attorney.
I'll move.
Then I'll second it.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, students. Thanks, Amy. We appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Ryan's been doing this a long time. He does a nice job. Okay, that takes us to item six, Village Attorney, excuse me, Village Administrative Report. Item A, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Police Department Conducted Latest Compliance Checks With Three Violations. Main TAP Had Their Second Offense Enrolling 12 Months and Four Times The Last Two Years. And Then Molegans Quick Trip South Had Violation. So the question for the Village Board, does the board want to discuss the continued violations with the Main TAP? So, what are your thoughts? You know, we talked before, the state legislature has tied our hands with some things that they have done that make it more difficult to deal with this, so...
Steve, what can we do? Is there, what's available?
Well, one thing is to suspend the license for a period of time. The state made it, has to be at least 10 days. And our discussion was, that's an awful long time.
Anything fine-wise, double?
We had an ordinance that would fine the second offense enrolling 12 months, would fine the agent. The state made that we can't do, they have to go to the seller. So again, they tied their hands on it.
Chief, what should we do?
I can't tell you what to do. I'm sorry.
This brings up a question for me of where we're at in the discussions with changing the alcohol policy that we started this summer. And at last I knew we were going to try and get together with the businesses.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, you know, I had a discussion with Judy about the chamber coordinating. That was the direction that came from the committee, and I was going to talk about it tonight. I mean, I think I concluded after talking to Judy about it, that I don't think that's a chamber function to coordinate a discussion about alcohol. I mean, it's really, if we're going to do something like that, it's going to be a forum. The board should do that, or the committee should do that. So, I mean, if you still want to do that, it's fine. We'd have to figure out what is the purpose of that discussion. It was just, if you think about it, it's kind of, it's kind of a different, or I hate to use strange, thing for a chamber of Congress to coordinate a forum on alcohol enforcement and violations. It's really, it's a governmental entity that should be doing that. So if you want to do that, it should really come from the board or from the committee.
Can I just add a couple of things?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Just kind of looking at this again with another client, certain aspects of it. So, the current lay of the land here with respect to this issue is that the legislature has amended the statute to say that if someone is served unlawfully during a compliance check, the only person who can be cited is the actual server. It used to be the case that we could, if you had a bartender who served, but there weren't the license holder, we could still cite the license holder for violating, for the violation. But we can't do that now. So that's one, so one thing we can do is cite the server. And what we have heard from license holders is that, at least I think one of the things we've heard is that they terminate people who, they sometimes terminate people who serve inappropriately. And their perspective is, you know, it's not my fault, it's their fault. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's one of the things we've heard. And that's kind of where we are with the state, which is the state is saying, you can only serve the person who actually...
Cite.
You can only cite the person who actually makes the sale or serves inappropriately, not the license holder. The next thing we looked at, or we've had a discussion at this board about whether or not, if there are multiple violations, the board, you know, whether the board wants to then move into a different kind of enforcement mode, namely initiating a proceeding that could lead to the suspension of a license or the revocation of a license on the basis of these failed compliance checks. As of, the board has not yet taken that path with anyone. I've actually been asked to look at whether that's something that could be done by another community, and we have looked at it here. One of the, one of the things we looked at, I guess we previously came to the conclusion, I previously came to the conclusion that that was possible, but there were some challenges associated with it. One of which was, the statute says that if you, if you decide to suspend a license, the minimum suspension period is 10 days. And the board felt that might be longer than it would want to suspend. Now, maybe the board could say, even though the statute says we're going to suspend you for 10 days, we'll only suspend you for two. And probably they're not going to complain about that. So, I mean, you could go that direction. But again, we're still talking about actually having to go through with a somewhat of a big, a significant process to even get to the point of suspension or revocation. And as I say, another community is asking me to look again at this question of whether you could pursue suspension or revocation. And I have a, I have an associate look at it, and his opinion on it is interesting. I haven't reviewed, had a chance to kind of check all of his work yet, but he seemed to come to the conclusion that you can't. So, I have to, I have to kind of review his work and see why he's come to that conclusion and see if that, if I agree with it or not. So, I think the question, can you suspend someone's license because one of their employees improperly serves, is up in the air right now, at least on my plate. So the one thing you, we know you can do is cite the server, and that is what's done now. And we, so we know we're doing that, and we can do that. In terms of escalating to suspension or revocation, that is both legally more questionable, and certainly it's a, it's a bigger question for the board. Do you want to go that direction with someone?
And is the majority of the board that would even do that? Even if you come back and say, yep, the board can do it, are there four members of the board that would suspend a license?
Who would want it, who would say, yeah, we should go that direction?
And I would say you don't have to go that far either, because, you know, we've had incidents before with other businesses, and you've actually called them in and had them explain what happened, why it happened, and what they're doing to fix that. So, that's also an option that you guys can do if you wanted to talk to the owners and say, you know, what are you doing to fix this? For those of you that may not be familiar with our process, we get someone who's obviously under age. We have someone accompany them who's of age that can kind of maintain the integrity of what we're doing. And they present the ID when they're asked. They present their real ID, that is an underage ID, that is a vertical ID that says under 21 right on it. So, we're not trying to fool anyone, we're just trying to make sure that they're complying with the laws, and that's what we do. The problem we had this time was, one of the businesses called around to the other businesses and let them know that we were doing it, so...
The thing that's interesting is that Quick Trip gets dinged on this because, over the years, I think, Steve remembers this, and Jeannie too, that, I mean, they do, they go through a training exercise and program they put their employees through, and we've seen it. And so, I'm always surprised that...
They didn't, in this case, they didn't scan it.
Yeah, I know. I do.
So, that was a complete failure by the employee.
Well, I think a year ago this December, there were eight failures of compliance checks, and seven people didn't ask for an ID. You know, that's, they talk, well, let's have a forum talk about this. To me, there's nothing to talk about. Check IDs. Check the ID, it's closed issue. That's all you have to do. It's easy to check an ID. Pull out your wallet, unless you have a really big purse, maybe it's a little more, but you have to pay the bill anyhow. So pull it out and show your ID. I mean, my recommendation would be to check IDs on anybody that looks to be under 35.
I think it's important to note that, after that, there was a few businesses in town that took some very proactive steps to correct the issue. And I can think of one, they check every time I go in, no matter what.
So are there any, any educational programs on, for, like, what they should be doing?
Yeah, we've provided education material, training materials.
It doesn't, hasn't done anything?
You know, it's, it's the businesses, you know, you're dealing with employees, I guess, and how they view their responsibilities when serving alcohol. So, I will say to Matt's point, yes, some employers have actually fired them for doing that. But I'll also say, some employers, they, it's the cost of doing businesses, and they pay the fines for the employees, too, so...
I think it would be good for us as a village, though, to have some clear-cut rules to sit down, you know? And while, while so far, I don't think people are at the point of being willing to suspend a license, it'd be great if we had rules and we said, look, if you have X number of violations within this number of periods, we're going to start the proceedings. If you also, if you have a certain, you know, less than that, like, you know, two or three in a rolling 12-month period, and you have an excessive number of police calls, and we could set a number. And, you know what I mean? We have to look at the whole picture of, of an establishment in the community. And if we had levels, rules, a point system, whatever that is, then the businesses know exactly where they stand. There is no question. And if they have to come before us to, in a proceedings where they might lose their license if we initiate that, then they know exactly where they stand. I mean, you know, like...
On July 16th, that was the main reason we had the meeting, was to talk about the MERA program, and there was, there was not much interest in doing that. And we already have a resolution that, that's adopted by the board that says if you do fail one in two, two in a rolling 12 months, that you come in front of the board. So, I mean, we have some things in place, but, but the question is, so then somebody comes in front of the board, besides talking to them, and it doesn't seem like there's enough, I'm, I'm just being honest, I don't think there's four votes to suspend a license, and so...
Well, not, not for, see, that's, that's just it. Like, I think we should have something concrete in place, something where, you know, the board says, like, if you hit this point, we are going to initiate proceedings, period. No excuses.
Well, make a motion and see if it passes.
I mean, and we can discuss...
I'm not going to vote for that.
No.
I mean, we can set that level wherever we want, though. That's what I'm saying. If we want to say six in a 12-month rolling period or whatever, we can set that wherever we want.
But we do, I mean, the requirements do two compliance checks each year. And there are times when it goes to three, because Brian goes back and they check the businesses that failed previously, so it would be three, but...
That's, so that's the max it could be.
Typically, the max would be two in 12-month rolling period, and I think like Matt said, our hands are pretty much tied. If we suspend the license from somebody who didn't actually serve underage, that's the issue right now.
That's the challenge.
Yeah. And I can see where that's, that's a complication. You know, I could... You know, I could, I wish there was more we could do, but I can see where an owner of an establishment that has a license, they can't control everybody that sells all the time, the owners could. I'd like them to be real proactive in encouraging them, you know, you come in for your shift and, be sure you check IDs, and watch, be sure they do. Because in a lot of places, they don't, apparently.
Yeah, well, and I'm not suggesting we do it for two in a 12-month rolling period, to be clear. But, you know, just setting...
Another challenge, man, is, is, you know, you talk about doing more than two or three or more, I mean, it's tough for us to find enough people and resources to be able to do more than two or three a year, so.
Well, that's where I'm feeling like other citations, like, you know, if they, if an establishment is the place of last being served, you know, repeatedly, and they're serving underage twice in a rolling month, you know, 12-month period, and, you know, the fights are always breaking out, and they're getting police, you know, I'm looking, what I'm saying is, we look at the whole picture, but I just, it's so ambiguous right now, it's a case-by-case basis, it's if we feel like calling them in and talking to them or whatever, and it's very, even the businesses aren't going to know where they stand.
Yeah, I think we can thank our legislature for that.
My counter policy was that if they fail twice in a 12-month rolling period, we call them in.
Yeah.
So have we, so I guess my question would be, have we called in these businesses?
Yeah.
Like, no, right, for, for this violation? Because we're talking about it, but if our policy is to bring them in, did they just not show up, or?
No, 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 so, so it's, only Mulligan's is the one that failed within the rolling, it's only...
May tap.
May tap.
Sorry, may tap, sorry.
Yeah.
And so the question is, but before, I mean, I could bring them to the next meeting if that's what you want.
I guess if that's our policy, I don't know why we're, we're discussing whether we're going to follow through with our policy, why wouldn't we just call them in and then have that conversation with them, and then decide what we're going to be doing with them?
I could do that, I'd be happy to do that, if you may put it on the agenda. Because, but my impression I got out of that committee meeting, which is like a four-hour meeting, was that we were pretty uncertain what we were going to do with this. We talked about the merit program, I mean, we went through the whole litany of things to do, and so before I would bring somebody in to a board meeting and say, here you are, I thought it was respectful to ask the board tonight, do you want me to actually do that?
I guess my, my takeaway was slightly different from that meeting. I agree that we were not sure of how we wanted to change the policy, and that we were wanting to still have a discussion over those changes, which is why I asked what the follow-up was, if we were going to meet with the chamber, because it wasn't about asking for them to help us dictate policy, but to be getting information from stakeholders and be hearing their positions and their viewpoints on, on this particular topic. But if this is our current policy, then I would say that's what we need to be doing while we're discussing, if we want to change our current policy.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they come in, and talk with them. So Brian, do we have any establishments where there are problems with fights and that type of thing? Is there, is there a problem? I mean, typically that would come back to us when we renew approvals of licenses every year in June.
Right. I would say we have one or two that could possibly have other issues in the establishment, but nothing that would, you know, in my opinion, warrant severe consequences at this point.
Okay.
So I will invite, sorry, I underspoke before, main tap to the next board meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And I, there's not a magic answer, you know, I, I've been involved this long time, it just seems like the legislature has tied our hands on what would be some good consequences. As Matt said, even with those ideas, it might be hard to do, so. We'll have a committee, and we'll see where it goes, and we can talk, get a committee if we want to. Yeah, that's all, all right?
Yeah. The only, and part of the reason I'm bringing it up is because there is ambiguity, but Madison doesn't do it this way. Madison has very clear-cut rules, and if the businesses violate them, they know exactly where they stand, they know they'll get their license revoked, and nobody loses any sleep at night, like, oh gosh, my decision just put a business, out a business because I had to suspend their license. I mean, it shouldn't be like that, there should be no guilt, there should be, here are the rules, if you don't follow them, here's the consequence. And that's what I feel we're lacking, that's all I'm looking for, some structure.
And I'd say, I would like that too, but I don't think our alcohol environment here is like it is in Madison. I think they have, obviously, a lot more licenses and a lot more problems at some establishments. When you read what happens in places, and we didn't come close to that, no thing, do we, you?
Well, I, I'll say, I don't think Madison does the kind of compliance checks that we're talking about, and, and I, I only become aware of suspension, revocation, and non-renewal proceedings with establishments that have problems that go well beyond the kind of compliance check failures that we're talking about. I, I've never heard of someone being suspended or revoked for two employees improperly serving during a 12-month period. Maybe, maybe Keith Yules heard of that, but I, I've never heard of such a thing.
I don't, I don't think so, and I, I mean, our officers, when they go through and do bar checks as well, they're also looking for people that might be underage, and they will try and, and ID them as well, so. Yeah, I think you're right, there are different issues in Madison with the type of environment they have there that go beyond just the compliance checks, but, you know, you know, again, we've had this discussion for many, many, many times, for many hours, so.
Yeah.
It's really up to the board on what you guys want to do and how you want to do with that.
The last six, six years, we've been talking about this.
Yeah. But I think means it's not, not a major one.
It's a good time.
It's like dumpsters.
Okay, so we'll be talking the next time, so item... Item B, follow-up to 1119, 2018 table motion regarding a conditional use permit application submitted on behalf of First Presbyterian Church of Oregon, property owner for a group development under section 17.220, the zoning ordinance for the First Presbyterian Church facility located at 408 North Bergmont Boulevard, to enable the use of activity rooms, NARTEX, and worship space for music and art education programming and performances by the Not-for-Profit Academy of Sound. Staff recommendation is refer the matter back to the plan commission and request the commission to work with the village planner and village attorney to amend the list of permitted and conditional uses in the institutional zoning district. Please note the youth center's temporary relocation to the Hillcrest Bible Church will also require a CUP.
So moved.
Second.
Who, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Who, who pays staff time to make all this happen? Does, is it the applicant, or is it the village?
Well, to change the zoning arts, we, we pay for that.
Okay.
But, but then to process the application, the, the church paid for that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, like, Aaron Chisman's not going to have to come up with, like, $3,000 to make this happen, okay?
We're, we're doing the zoning arts change, the village covers that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any comments?
Oh, Aaron's here, I didn't see you. Sorry.
Welcome, Aaron.
Hi, I'm Aaron Chisman, I own Academy of Sound. I also happen to be the president of the Oregon Youth Center, and I saw that a little bit on there too, so I just wanted to first see if there are any questions, or like, I guess, clear up any misinformation about Academy of Sound, because I think there were some inaccuracies the last couple meetings that this has come up, about like our nonprofit status, and about our hours, and things like that. So, and I don't know how much that matters in the scope of making the decisions that you guys are going to be making, but I do want to make sure you have the right information about my music school, and what we do, and when we do it, and what we've been doing, and that kind of thing, so.
It wasn't, it wasn't the hours, it was, it was the status of, is it a for-profit or not-profit?
Okay.
And that's, that's the problem in the, in the zoning code.
Okay. And so, am I understanding it correctly, that you guys are considering amending the zoning code to be inclusive of Academy of Sound LLC being located inside of First Presbyterian Church?
Not exactly. Amending the zoning code to make it possible, so that that could happen.
Okay.
Because right now, it's limited to nonprofits and...
Okay.
And then, and then we would, I didn't put it on you, but then, let's say the plan commission would agree with this, and the board would agree with this, and then I would ask Jeff, as our zoning administrator, to reach out to the other churches and say, we're not saying you're doing it, but if you, if you're doing this, you need to come forward and request a CUP.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess, if we're kind of done talking about that for right now, I had some questions about the youth center needing a CUP to be at Hillcrest temporarily. I, that's the first I had heard of it, was when I read it on the agenda when I opened my email today, so I want to know what we're supposed to do.
That's happens when the village attorney reads the local newspaper on this.
He's going to cancel.
Well, I already talked to the newspaper today about some things, so...
Cancel the subscription.
Every week, I say, what's going on?
And, you know, they spelled our name correctly, Academy of Sound, and the rest of the article about us was all wrong. There'll be a correction this week, but as for, as for the youth center, I mean, that article seemed pretty accurate, I skimmed it, I didn't read it thoroughly, so.
Yeah, you want to explain it to me? Well, so I think the issue is with the youth center, what I, the story I read indicated that, that the youth center might want to locate and operate on a temporary basis out of this church while, while it's not able to use the existing space, I guess, and, and so it's kind of the same issue that Academy of Sound is facing in terms of operating out of a church. So our zoning code says right now, if you've got two separate users operating out of the same facility, like a church building, that, that's called a group development, and you need a conditional use permit in order for that to be allowed under our zoning code. So I thought, oop, sounds like another group development. So we either need to, like, change our code so that group developments don't require any special approval, or we need to have somebody like the youth center that wants to operate out of the church, or have a church that wants to have other businesses operating out of it, they need to come in and get approval, so...
And does that count even if, I mean, Hillcrest Bible Church has offered that space to the youth center for free, for four or five months?
And it's temporary.
It's, yeah, well, yeah, I remember those too, so...
Yeah.
So even then, somebody would have to pay.
No, it doesn't matter, you can...
Legally, it doesn't matter under the zoning code.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't have something in there that says this is okay if it's only temporary and you're not paying for it.
But there's a good chance that, but, there's a good chance by the time the zoning arts go through the process...
It'll be done.
I put it, I put it on the agenda anyway, but as, when I was doing it, I realized that the timing, you, you may be already moved out of there, so.
And the concern we have from an enforcement standpoint is, what happens is if, if we say to someone, oh, you're supposed to have a conditional use permit for that, if, if we're uneven in enforcement, then what we hear is, well, you didn't make that, get one. And then, so we, we try and be even-handed.
Just thinking about this, well, you're saving time for the next one.
And I'm, you know, I'm happy to ignore it, but then, but then you guys will have to deal with the aftermath of, of that.
So, and that's why, whenever, whatever we decide, the plan commission and board decides, then will we tell the other churches, we treat everybody the same in the community?
So the youth center's already operating at Hillcrest Bible Church, it's been for about three weeks, so, and I, I mean, nobody knew that this was a thing, so does Hillcrest need to fill out a conditional use permit? Is that what needs to happen to make it correct?
Technically, technically speaking, yes.
Okay. And there's a fee with that as well?
There is.
So that's unfortunate, because they're offering the space for free, which is at a loss to them, and then they're going to have to pay to take a loss on the space. I mean, you can see how asking them to do that might be...
Unless the village board decides to say, yeah, group developments, no problem, go ahead.
What's the fee?
It's $1,500.
Well, that, that's, that's refundable, right?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a simple CUP, some of the money's refundable back to the apple.
That's just to cover expenses associated with, the non-refundable portion is what, probably is...
We, yeah, we keep, like, $125, I think it's, there's a, $150 we keep, we, for publication costs and things like that.
We probably have OCR and paper.
You know, I mean, if they want to wait and see what happens, because we're going to be looking at the ordinance, and it's possible that the ordinance will change in a way that would make this completely unnecessary, it's totally up to them, my guess is that the zoning administrator is not going to come cracking down on, on anyone in the near future, but...
We're, we're pouring concrete today, so...
Honestly, I mean, I, I would just wait to see what the commission does with this.
There's no, there's no hurry, I guess.
Okay.
See what happens.
Okay. Is there any kind of timeline on as far as Academy of Sound goes, and like, getting all of this done, like, when, do you have any idea when it would be the final, like, either approved or denied?
It'll go to the plan commission in January 10th, well, we'll talk about it then, and it either will come back to the board, or, the, the hearing could happen in February, and then it would be, the arts would probably be effective in the middle of February. The new, the new arts, unless it gets, unless the commission says, no, they want more, and it drags out to, to March, or, you know, gets extended out to March, so it, it could, it could happen by the, the board meeting, the second board meeting in February, possibly.
Okay.
Possibly.
Do you envision any problems with the plan commission?
I think it's just more, what, what do they want to do with...
Trying to make it work.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's it, tell the board too, how to make this work.
I mean, there's one issue that I think is an easy issue, and in my mind, there's really no reason to treat for-profits and nonprofits differently in this scenario, so that's an easy call. To me, the harder call is, two other calls. One is, do we care about regulating group developments? Or should we say, we're not going to, we're not going to regulate that anymore, and we're not going to look at those anymore?
So what's a group development?
A group development is, again, a situation where you've got a single structure that has multiple different businesses operating out of it. And when we've talked about why you have to get a conditional use permit for that under our existing code, what's come out of those discussions with our planner is, well, the, the main issue we need to look at generally is parking demand, to make sure that, you know, if you, so you've got a, you've got a church building that has a certain parking demand, and we have a standard for that in our ordinance, so when we review the original church site plan and so on, we're saying, we were able to say, you either have enough parking or you don't, and you meet our requirements. The question is, if then the church says, well, I'm going to lease space out to this business for this activity, and that business for that activity, and you have more users coming into play that also have additional parking demands, then you need to look at that. That seems to be the big issue. There's also, I suppose, the possibility that there might be some kinds of users that would present other issues, but parking seems to be the big issue.
And, right.
So...
So, for example, with the Academy of Sound, one of the restrictions we actually put in the conditional use permit was, you can't actually have class or be operating Academy of Sound at the same time as a church service on Sunday, because then you'd have double up on the parking, and you wouldn't have enough parking.
So by changing the, this zoning ordinance at the planning commission level, then it would come here, and once we do that, and we say profit, nonprofit, doesn't matter, it's, but we're sticking with the parking issues and the, everything else, once that's done, you can get, we'll approve the CUP, we could do it for the youth center, we just need the application, easy.
Easy, easy.
Okay.
It's just one of those...
Quick fix.
Well, 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 the, the youth center would have to go into the CUP process, public hearing and all of that, so, they already have done that.
Right, right.
So I think the issue for the youth center is, will the, will they be out of there by the time we get this all figured out, so they don't even bother, or will they still be there, and now we know how the ordinance shapes up, and it turns out they either still do, or they don't need a CUP?
I'll, I'll be surprised if the commission just says a group development does not need a CUP. Do you disagree?
Oh, no, me, I agree with you.
They're going to want to see it?
Yeah, because I think they're going to be concerned that something, let's say somebody else besides Aaron was in that church, and they caused problems with parking, or in...
I think it makes sense to continue to regulate that.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Is that clear enough?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're okay, Aaron, under, everything?
I'm okay, yeah. I just wanted to see where we're at, and, and what you guys need from me, so, you guys know how to reach me, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yep.
So do we need a motion to send this back to plan commission, or just?
I, I wrote down that jury and...
We already made it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just need to approve it.
Okay. So we have a motion to refer this back to Plan Commission as stated here. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ball's motion carries.
Just that it's been about fifteen minutes since we made it.
That's long enough for me. Item seven, approval of minutes, there are none. Item eight, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents for approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, no questions.
Mike, or at least sixty-four hundred Oregon School District Village contribution to something, some, S-U-M-M-E.
Summer rec.
Yeah, the summer rec program.
Okay.
The school district.
The village, the village used to do that.
Okay.
But then the school...
Many years ago.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Any additional questions on vouchers?
No, I'm waiting to ask about Amendment Three.
Okay, so we have vouchers, you know, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents for approval. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steaton?
Yes. Motion carries. Item nine is community input. Anyone wish to address the board tonight? Welcome, Judy.
I'm Judy Knudsen, I'm the Oregon Chamber Executive Director, and I want to take this time to invite you all to this Friday night is our Christmas lighting, caroling, right up out of our wonderful tree we have, and then we're all going over to the fire department and having a free chili dinner, so it's free to the community, there's no charge whatsoever, but if you feel that you'd like to bring donations for the food pantry, we welcome that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Item ten, proclamation announcements. Item A, board comments. Anyone? Okay. Item B, staff comments. Item one. Mike?
You did burn the motel, or the fire department did.
The motel is gone.
You did, Mike?
That's, that's the status of it.
Well done.
Okay.
It was interesting, a lot of members of the public there.
Yeah.
The fire chief actually set up a great training for the, for the department.
Upcoming meetings are listed here?
Yep.
Know those, please.
Only have one more meeting this year.
Maybe. Jerry, maybe.
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 We'll see.
Okay.
What, are we going to have more?
December twenty-fourth, June.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're off.
Might not have one.
I won't be here.
No, I think we, one more meeting, yes.
Item eleven, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion, possible action on the 2018 budget amendment three. Recommended motion is to approve amendment number three.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
What in the heck is going on with this?
So, if you remember, in two thousand seventeen, towards the end of the year, we were down two staff people for an extended period of time, naturally, and that was during our budgeting process, and during two thousand seventeen also, we were going back and forth with the PSC about what class our water utility...
That's a, that's a public service, public service.
Public Service Commission, what class our water utility should be, and they determined that beginning in January first of two thousand eighteen, that because of the number of customers that we have, we had to move from a Class C to a Class AB, which requires, requires more detail in reporting to the Public Service Commission annually. So knowing that, and not having enough staff, beginning January one, we did the budget as a Class C, and then what this is doing is just moving the budget amounts from the Class C code to the new Class AB code.
Very good, makes sense.
Good.
Even to me.
Good, even better. I don't know if anybody else has any questions about it, but it's just, it's all, just, we don't, we were down staff and there was just not enough time to go through that whole process of trying to figure out how to allocate it out, and so I've got it figured out, and now I have to do journal entries and everything on the expense accounts and, and put it all into the new account code, so it's, it's a big process, and that was the one thing that I was going to have our new staff person do that started and didn't stay with us long.
Thanks, Lisa. Any further questions? Okay, so we have motion second to approve 2018 budget amendment number three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, review of 2018 sample tax bill. Tax bills must be mailed by December seventeenth, two thousand eighteen per state statutes.
So this, this shows, can I do this, Lisa, you want to do it?
Go ahead.
So I think example two is interesting, I've talked to Jerry about this a few times, because, you know, you have some districts who have a decrease in tax rate, when, when you have a house, and there actually are some houses in the village that didn't have property value increase, that your, your taxes are actually going down. So, and so when somebody says, you know, that, "Oh, my, my, our tax rate is going down and your taxes are going down," this is the only way it can happen is if the value stays the same or goes down, so. And then for an average house, after everything is said and done and the, and the tax credit is, is applied, it's, it's going about a hundred dollars overall. That's the, the net rate, so...
And it's basically all determined by the sales in your area, right, in your neighborhood.
Is it, it's, I had, I had the assessor, assessor explain to me one time, and it's, it's complicated how your values are impacted, you know. But then, Lisa wanted me to put on the agenda that tax bills must be mailed by December seventeenth, and we have to do that by state law, we'll easily, we'll make that deadline. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, item C, review of recent action by Dane County cities and villages regarding jurisdictional transfer of Dane County roads. There's MOU from the villages with the Dane County and Director of Public Works email Dane County with proposed schedule for county roads.
So I, you know, I saw this information, and then I, I realized that, you know, probably Jenna and Amanda and Randy probably even know we have this MOU, have this MOU with, with Dane County for the roads, so I thought it was a good time just to bring this up for, for information and discussion. I told this to, I think to Jerry this morning, that it's ironic that the Cities and Village Association passed this motion, because I was working on this fifteen years ago, and I, I couldn't get any traction on it. Tony Roach and I, the former administrator in Fitchburg, we just, they just weren't interested. I'm not sure why all of a sudden they're doing this, but they are. I am not asking for the board to go back on the MOU, I think if Jeff was here, Jeff is in support, Jeff Ross, excuse me, is in support of just continuing with the MOU, and then, you see, there's an email that he sent to Dane County, and that's, that is our, our current schedule, you know, we're, we're focused on doing the intersection of Janesville and Park Street next year, and then, and then fixing Park Street in front of the hotel. I don't know if you've been on that street, it, it needs work, and so our, our focus is on doing that before we would approach the two county sections. Again, this could change, but that's, that's what we're looking at, and, and again, not asking for you to take any action, but I just wanted to do FYI for the, the new board members.
Right.
Thank you.
Plus, we've already negotiated Maine, North Maine and Janesville Street with Dane County.
Just, just the MOU. We haven't, we haven't done the agreements on either of them.
Oh, okay.
So the MOU, the MOU just sort of provides a framework of, of what we would do, you know, I mean, if the board wants to, there's nothing that, I don't think they could come back and say, "Oh, you're breaking the MOU," it's, it's not a contract.
No. No, I, I wasn't alluding to that, I was just saying, you know, just having control of the roads that run through the village, because right now it's cumbersome. If the roads are in disrepair, we have to go through Dane County Highway, because it's a county trunk.
Yep.
And sometimes that can take a while, they have to budget for it, or they have what they call their Pacer review of, if their review of the road says it's just fine and we don't agree with that, well, our hands are tied.
And if, and if time was not a factor and money was not a factor, Jeff and I freely admit that both the, the last two sections of the county roads should be done next year, but we just don't have the time and the money to do that, and we're having to, to break this out. So I'm not, not telling our village residents, "Oh, those roads don't need work," we, we freely recognize those two sections need work, but we just can't do everything at one time.
If the budget, well, it's, really, the county is going to come in and do the work.
We, we pay a share of it.
We pay a share.
And then we're going to, I'm sure that Jeff will be wanting to do some utility work underground as well, like we did on Jefferson Street.
Okay. Okay. That will take us to item D, review of email from State Representative Sandy Pope regarding possible change in the 2020 election schedule. She has agreed with us and is opposed, which is an agreement with our, our county clerks.
Yep. And I, I saw an interesting article today down, it's going to be down to, I guess, they're saying five Republican, five Republican senators, if they don't go along with these changes, it, it won't happen.
Yeah.
So, because, that's something, oh, they only can lose so many Republicans, and, and I know Luther Olson, who was quoting the paper yesterday, Senator Olson, he, he has concerns with this, so, we'll see what happens. But I do thank Peggy for doing it, I think it was, even though it was a little early getting, I thought it was important for people to know that we're concerned about this, you know.
Good vote on it, early as tomorrow, right?
Yes, yeah.
Did we reach out to any other legislators on this?
Yes, quite a few.
Everybody on the, on the email.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I missed that, that it was to multiple, okay.
I actually heard a story this morning on this guy's public radio indicating that there were clerks around the state who were weighing in on, with their concerns about this, so this is something that...
I heard, I heard Chris Jolly even mention, he said, it was like thirty-four, forty county clerks said, "Please do not do this."
I heard sixty of this.
Yeah, it did. Originally, it was thirty-four, but it went up to sixty.
Okay.
So, I mean, feel free to fact-check me on that one, but that's what I remember hearing.
And the cost was millions of dollars.
Seven million.
Yeah. Very confusing.
I have a lot more time, that's why I keep it in the house. Okay. Item E, police commission vacancy, we have one right now. If you're interested as a village resident, please contact Village Administrator Mike Grace, you can find his email on our website. Item nine, discussion, possible action regarding police department purchase of mobile automated license plate recognition camera system. Recommended motion is to approve the quote from Baycom in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and nine dollars for the purchase of the mobile automated license plate recognition camera system plus eighteen hundred dollar annual maintenance fee, funding from the business property law specialist donations, and we will recognize them at a future board meeting.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Chief.
So everyone know what the ALPR is? You guys are all familiar with that?
No.
Recognize as license plates, it'd drive down the street.
Very new. It does, yeah. So Jeff Knopf, our PLS, was gracious enough last year and this year to, to donate ten thousand dollars. He's pretty excited about this as long, as well as the officers. Basically, it's a four-camera system that's mounted on the squads. As we drive by vehicles, it automatically runs the license plates and takes a picture of the vehicle, whether they're moving or parked, runs it through, basically, the consortium that you see there is all part of it, and it runs it through the back end of, of the system itself, and if the license plate is wanted, if it's suspended, if it's a stolen vehicle, it automatically pops up on the computer screen and alerts the officer that there's something wrong with that vehicle. So it's a great system to have, we can use it for investigative purposes as well, if something happens in the village, we're trying to track someone, and they've gone through some of these jurisdictions, for example, we can kind of track them and their movements and where they've been. So it's a great investigative tool for us, and we're hopeful that you'll approve this and allow us to, to bring this on board.
This is all funded by donations?
It's, the entire system is funded by donation, the only thing that'll happen is annually, we'll have a maintenance to be part of the consortium and a software maintenance fee, and it's going to be about eighteen hundred bucks.
And you'll budget for that.
I'll budget for that, yeah.
How much was it again?
About eighteen hundred bucks.
Okay.
That's quite a donation.
Yeah.
Almost seventeen thousand dollars.
Chief, what's the life of the camera system itself, do you know?
I, I do not know that, no.
How long is the data, like, stored, these pop-ups that you get, like, how long is that kept in the system?
Well, it's, Fitchburg is the host, and their IT department takes care of that. I don't know what kind of storage capacity they have. I would assume it's going to meet any kind of open records laws, if that's what you're, you're alluding to, but, yeah.
Other questions? So we have the motion second to approve this donation and purchase of the automated license plate recognition camera system. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve, minutes now requiring action, there are none, unfinished business, there is none, new business. We have item B, approval of pending renewal operating licenses, recommended approval by the police department. Head stop and go, Amanda K. Heebner. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That takes us down. Now we have future agenda items listed, and takes us to item sixteen, would be a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?